Call the meeting to order.
This meeting will also be conducted by audio and video conference without the requirement of a physically present quorum for the Rock Island City Council due to the disaster declaration issued by Governor Pritzker. Because of this order related to COVID-19, health concerns affecting the state and the city, the mayor has determined that an in-person meeting at City Hall with all participants may not be practical or prudent. Alderpersons and staff may not all be physically present at City Hall. Due to the disaster and physical attendance at City Hall may be limited. To participate remotely during the public comment or public hearing portion of the meeting, please join by phone at 1-669-232-0060 and use PIN 502-480-333 and the pound sign.
Thank you. We do a roll call.
Alderman Robinson.
Present.
Alderman Hurt.
Here.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Present.
Alderwoman Swanson.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Pulis.
Here.
Alderman Geenan.
Present.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance? Remain standing for a moment of silence.
My word allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Bible with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Public comment. Is there a sheet back there? I'm sorry. Yes. It's got a lot of names, and so I think some might have been from the study session, I believe, but I want to make sure, because I'm not sure who's here, that a lot of these were actually for the study session, but 30 good books signed up. And I'll see him here. I think at my left, AJ, I think he left. So I'm not trying to rush things. Tamara, I think she left. Let's make sure Annika spoke. John Kinzer.
Who's out in the hallway.
Okay, I think this was all, because the topic they put here was police relationship. So I just want to make sure Tyler, or Ty... Tylin Roberts. Okay, that's Chris Dunn. All right, we're getting down there. Derek Boyd.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. What I'm up here for is what some of them are sitting out in the hallway still addressing is the situation with Derek Boyd and Mr. Roberts that applied for Rock Island Police Department. And what we're really struggling with is they've applied once before, and they were told one thing the first time they applied. Now they applied this time, and they were told something different. So what we're really looking for is more some consistency on what is the requirements to be a Rock Island Police Department. For both of them to be Rock Island County residents, they grew up, they graduated from Rock Island High School, and they sought to come back to Rock Island and apply for one of the jobs that it seems like in our community is one of the hardest jobs to get people to get involved in. And for both of these young men to have taken those steps, we just want to do in Rock Island what we can to kind of deal with them as being champions. We want to champion the fact that we are raising kids in Rock Island, and we're going to help them get involved in what's happening in Rock Island in every level. You know, at this time, it just seems to be Police Department. And so what I want to say is, for me, is there a way that there's another step based on just the commission's recommendation? Or is that the final safe? And so if there's anything that the City Council or you, Mr. Mayor, can do to assist us in that, I would look forward to your suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. John Van Norman. Would you like to speak?
John Van Norman, 512 42nd Avenue, Rock Island. And I'm here tonight to talk about potholes that have a problem not getting filled. Sent an email to my alderman, Randy Hurt, sent him a text. Got a text 140 today. Will call before I head to City Council meeting, and I'm still waiting for that call. I've left multiple messages starting about mid-late February regarding my three-plex in Rock Island at 2532. The only access to the building is the alley in the back for the parking. And I called, leave a message, nothing. Got ahold of the city lady answering the phone. I said, can you leave a message for Mike Bartel? And I've sent Randy emails, no reply, because they say, send him an email, you get a reply. No reply. There's probably been four or five attempts to get somebody to get back with me on this. I called back, I think maybe March or April. There were extreme potholes between 9th Street and 11th behind the 711. They were huge. I said, they really need to get done. They were real Johnny-on-the-spot. And I also, in that same breath, told them about the three-plex alley, and it still hasn't been touched. So I was looking at the agenda and all the money that's allowed for all these different businesses, I mean, hundreds of thousands, 50,000s, even into the millions, and we're probably looking at about $700-$800 worth of code pack. So I'm not really pleased owning multiple properties in Rock Island and paying my property taxes on time, and I can't even get measly potholes filled so I get a decent access to my property across from the old Save-A-Lot.
Okay. Well, you don't, Mr. Bartels is in the audience here, you can speak with him.
Yes, and I was here about three years ago, and you told me the same thing in regards to resurfacing my street, and the ball got dropped there, too. I had pictures showing major center hump where a 60,000-pound trash can comes, or trash truck comes down, back and forth, and keeps humping the road because we got two to three inches of asphalt. Mike even came up, oh yeah, I'll check, blah, 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 and that was it. So I'm just here to voice it and let everybody that's watching know what's going on in the other part of the city.
You typically don't do a lot of work in alleys and everything else, but...
The only access to my property. Do you have, do you have potholes in the street in front of your house?
Yes, I do.
They're not as big as one of my three-plex.
I could have taken that, but yes, I do. But the best I can do is, Mr. Bartels is here, and you can work with him. Otherwise, you can talk to Mr. Hurt again, or try to get a hold of him afterwards.
I will say, I apologize for not getting back to you today. I was running late for my regular job to be here by 5:00. So it was more of a time shortage, and I didn't intend to get back. And I have, I have responded to you. You're saying I don't respond to you at all, and I have responded. I have some emails and that.
With no results. You were supposed to get with me and Mike Bartels.
I have forwarded information, yes.
And I've heard nothing.
And to reiterate what the mayor said, Mr. Bartels is here, and I'm sure he would like to have a conversation with you, or you could have a conversation before you leave here and see what you guys can figure out. I mean, that's, that's all I can tell you.
So can you explain why I need to take time out and drive all the way down here and go through this process? And now I find out, or you're willing to talk to me, but for the last two and a half or three weeks since I initially talked to you, and you were going to get ahold of...
That's an untrue statement, but I don't, we're not going to make that up.
We're not going to get back. This, this part of the format is not debate back and forth.
I know.
And, and so Mr. Bartels can take your information, the two of you can try to work it out.
He's already got my information.
He knows the policy and his budget and, and works with that, so, and what he can and cannot accomplish.
Well, I hope they don't run out of black code pack.
So, thank you.
Good evening, Rock Island City Council. The rule of law is the mechanism, process, institution, practice, or norm that supports the equality of all citizens before the law. It secures a non-arbitrary form of government and more generally prevents the arbitrary use of power. But that is speaking ideally. That is speaking outside of white privilege. That is speaking outside of police privilege. In America, there is no such thing as black privilege. In fact, black people in America have went from slavery, which was a system of control, to Jim Crow, which was a system of control, to mass incarceration, which is the current system of control. Our criminal justice system is not about crime prevention. Our criminal justice system is about racial and social control. Our criminal justice system is strategically employed to keep black people in second-class citizenship. But before we get incarceration, we must get arrested. Traffic stops are the most common form of police-citizen interactions. Every driver will eventually violate some trivial traffic offense. The police have wide discretion when it comes to picking and choosing which drivers to stop. Needless to say, the record is replete with examples of police abusing such discretionary law enforcement powers. Police privilege is a problem in our city. We, as citizens of Rock Island, must develop the courage to confront this problem, but we also must develop the empathy to understand this problem. That doesn't just include you, that includes me, too. Rock Island City Council, I am the founder of Section 1983 Initiative, and I have some remarkable people on my team. We created Section 1983 Initiative to inform, educate, inspire, and alleviate police abuse. And there will be no such thing as discrimination in this organization. What happens, Rock Island City Council, if someone in your family is abused by the police? Do you expect the police to police the police? We care about you and your family's civil rights, too. Rock Island City Council, so please keep in mind that Section 1983 is not based on color or discrimination. Section 1983 is based on creating social justice and alleviating police abuse in Rock
Thank you. The next person... P. Ray. Apologize, I can't read it, so...
Greetings to the City Council. My name is P. Ray Easley. I am the hostess of Black Excellence Hour in Chicago, Illinois, on WVON, the only conservative talk show on urban talk radio on iHeartRadio. I am here to speak to you all as fellow Americans. As we know, in this country, the first person in this country to lose and shed blood for its independence was a black man named Crispus Atticus. Black people have been at the forefront of every single movement in this country since its inception. And based on the information that we are receiving in the city of Chicago, it's a little difficult for black people in this space. And so we are asking on behalf of other Americans, fellow Americans, that we remember the people who paved the roads, planted the seeds to harvest the meal for the sugar and the apples to build the American pie that everybody came to eat. We were here before, we were here baking the pie when people were hearing about the pie. So I want to make sure that we understand and hear the very real social and racial inequities that are going on in this country to show a little deference and gratitude to the people who made it easy for everybody to arrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Rock Island. William Scott, 81 years young and quite nimble, and always pleased to attend a public session of our local, county, state, or federal government, because I feel at home any time the public's money is being spent in any of the 50 states in U.S. territories, especially as an irrepressible history teacher whose whole mission in life has been to get our young people involved. In fact, when I look around, should have some high school students here and some college students in here, because I do really believe that eternal vigilance is the price of democracy. And how could the public possibly know what goes on city, county, state, and federal if they're not catching it on cable or if they're not here in person? I came to lend myself, my support to what Anthony Gay is about, because I heard about this situation, some things he's involved in here in Rock Island. And my total knowledge of Rock Island is, oh, the Rock Island Line is a mighty fine line, get your ticket at the station on the Rock Island Line. Well, I'm pleased to be here a second time to see our public servants at the helm adjudicating the issues of the citizens, especially with the gentleman there came about what's going on in his front door. So now that I know I can cross the state right to the banks of the Mississippi in no time, you'll be seeing me more in the future, because the public's business is my business wherever our flag is flying. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that's all that has signed up at this point. Got item number seven.
Minutes of the May 25th, 2021, and June 8th, 2021 special City Council meetings and the June 14th, 2021 City Council meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis. Aye.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item number eight.
The May 24th, 2021, and June 14th, 2021 executive sessions.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item number nine is Rock Island Update. Got a couple items here. The Geniesis Guild Live Theater. The Geniesis Guild is returning for the 2021 season with free classical theater shows in Lincoln Park. The next show is Shakespeare, His Life and His Works with Shakespeare and Don Wooten. It will run from July 3rd and 4th and 10th and 11th and start 7:00 PM. Shows will run approximately 90 minutes. Audience members will not be required to wear masks, but it is recommended that one is worn if you are not within six feet, excuse me, if you're worn if you are within six feet of another group. Red, White &amp; Boom, Red, White &amp; Boom will be held July 3rd in Shreveport Park. Gates will open at 5:00 PM with music from DJ Jeff James. At 7:00 PM, Past Curfew, an 80s tribute band, will play followed by the fireworks display at 9:30. Firework music will be heard throughout the park or tune in to 96.9 FM, 97X, to hear this soundtrack. Concessions will be available throughout the park from multiple vendors. Shreveport Riverfront Park Entertainment and Activities are presented by the Rock Island Park and Recreation with support from the City of Rock Island, Rock Island Police Departments, as well as Rock Island Happy Joe's Pizza, Friendship Manor, McManus Orthodontics, Country Financial Stacy Brown, and the Rock Island Animal Hospital. And then actually, another one, this is a little different, but I would like to, I guess, this time, just recognize and publicly thank Mr. John Thorson. It's his last council meeting before his retirement, and I wanted to, I guess, publicly acknowledge that and thank him for his years of experience and professionalism that he's brought to the city of Rock Island. John is the Human Resource Director and has done an outstanding job over the years in a lot of different roles, obviously administering the health and health program and everything else. But lately, of course, a lot of the new hires, which has been extraordinary, and union negotiations, and just an all-around, willing to jump in. He's been the alter, or the interim city manager when the city manager's not here, and so he's filled in for that role. So once again, steps up to the plate when needed and where needed. So once again, John, thank you very much. Good luck, have fun in your next chapter. It's a good gig. I can say that I've been there part of the time. Several people in the audience I see, even the one sitting behind you there. But Bill, it's a fun gig, and to be able to call your own shots when you want to do it, besides what your wife wants. But, so thank you very much for your tenure in Rock Island. Item number 10.
Proclamation declaring July 3rd, 2021 as Red, White, &amp; Boom and Military and Arsenal Appreciation Day, whereas the cities of Rock Island, Illinois, and Davenport, Iowa have been cooperative neighbors since the founding of each community in 1835 and 1836 respectively, and whereas there exists a long history of collaboration dating back to the 1850s when the two communities were connected by the first railroad bridge across the Mississippi River, and whereas Red, White, &amp; Boom is celebrating its 15th anniversary of cooperation between these two communities, and whereas River Vision is a cooperative plan for the redevelopment of the riverfront between the two cities, and whereas the execution of said plan has brought continuous improvements and enhanced the quality of life along both riverfronts, and whereas we honor the birth of our nation, those who gave all for our great country, and those who serve today to protect our shores, and whereas Arsenal Island and the military commands located there have been a significant part of the history of both communities, and whereas our communities commemorate the Rock Island Arsenal and the arsenal's importance to our region and nation.
Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, congratulate the cities of Rock Island and Davenport for their improvement to the riverfront, but also to the Rock Island Arsenal and all its past achievements and innovations, and look forward to celebrating future successes. We do hereby proclaim July 3rd, 2021 as Red, White, &amp; Boom and Military and Arsenal Appreciation Day. Is there someone here? Don?
No.
No. Okay. Not here. I guess I would add to that, of course, once again, it's always great to collaborate with your, with our sister cities around here, working together for these type of events. Item number 11.
Presentation of the Auditor's Financial Report for Calendar Year 2020.
Linda's up. Exciting numbers.
Well, before we get started on the exciting numbers, I wanted to provide some information from the Government Finance Officers Association regarding the annual report. So the National Government Finance Officers Association issued a policy in March of this year regarding proper referencing of the comprehensive annual financial report. The policy stated the following. The Government Finance Officers Association is asking all industry affiliates to immediately stop using the common four-letter acronym, most often associated with the comprehensive annual financial report. Instead, GFO recommends referring to the report by either the full name or by using a shortened format that does not include the four-letter acronym. For instance, the annual report is advised. The four-letter acronym, even pronounced by saying each letter individually, is still not advised. This policy change is the result of a new and evolving industry, understanding that the acronym, when pronounced aloud, mimics the pronunciation of a deeply derogatory term, often used in other parts of the world, but readily recognized among certain populations in the United States as well. As an organization made up, made up of 21,000 finance professionals that serve diverse communities across the country, and a growing list of important partners across the world, GFOA believes it is the responsibility of all government finance professionals to embrace change that moves us towards becoming more thoughtful, responsible, and inclusive global citizens. So with that said, the city, we have updated the city's website to remove the acronym, but we inadvertently left it on a couple of slides in the presentation. So we do apologize for that oversight. And so with that being said, I'm going to introduce Tim Gavin from Lauterbach in Amen to present our annual financial report.
All right, thank you so much. Thanks for having me here. It's really nice to be here in person and to say that 2020 was a unique year. Obviously, it doesn't need to be said, but I'm going to say it anyway. The financial report should be read with that in mind, and I'm going to go through just a few highlights. I'm going to do a few, you know, explanations, and then I'm happy to answer any questions from the council. But first and foremost, the, all the departments that, that are necessary for this process, we extend our thanks. The process went very smoothly, especially under the circumstances, you know, this is the second year in a row we've had to work remotely, which presents its own challenges. And extra huge thanks to Linda and her team. She did remarkably well with all the prep work, and I like to say that we are effectively professional nuisances. So dealing with our requests and, and still getting your day-to-day work done is nothing short of a miracle. So to summarize, the audit did, it was a very clean and smooth process, and we did issue what we call an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean audit opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we are allowed to give. As mentioned, the city has once again earned the Certificate of Excellence or Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the December 31st, 2019 audit, so that certificate has been presented in this year's annual report. And we fully anticipate that this year's report will also earn the certificate once, once it gets submitted. We did not encounter any internal control findings, and there were no new management letter comments, as anything communicated in prior years has been implemented. So clean report card, so to speak. One of the goals, the main goal of the financial statement audit is to perform a series of testing on transactions and account balances on a, on a test basis to ultimately conclude that the financial statements are materially correct. And that involves, again, a lot of looking at source documents, testing account balances, evaluating transactions and agreements, and, and board minutes, and all of those things that, that feed into the, you create the transactions that result in the financial statements, as well as doing a high-level overview of the internal controls and processes that the finance department and other departments follow to ensure that those transactions are recorded correctly. In summary, for the report itself, there's a few key items that are worthy of note, and a few of them are unique to the comprehensive report that the city issues. Not every municipal government issues a comprehensive report, so it takes some extra effort on the city's part to provide that additional information, but it yields a much better and more thorough product. So again, commendations to, to the finance department for that. But one of those additional items is the transmit a letter, and that's found on pages three to nine. That provides a good, high-level overview. That provides a good, high-level overview of the city itself, its economic context, the initiatives that it's involved in, some financial and budgetary policies, kind of sets the stage for what follows. Page 10, as mentioned, does present the certificate for last year's report, and there's the error in reference that Linda pointed out, so apologize for that. And then on pages 13 to 14 is the independent audit's report. It is the only page of the report with our letterhead on it, therefore, it's ultimately the product of our work. And again, that was a clean or unmodified audit opinion. The following section is, I always say this, if you don't read anything else in the annual report, read pages 16 through 27. The management's discussion and analysis effectively serves as an executive summary for the report. It lays out, in mostly layman's terms, how the report is structured, some key financial highlights, a comparison of last year's numbers to this year's numbers, and some explanations for why those numbers may have changed, especially in this year with what we all went through in 2020. A lot of those explanations are key to understanding the reality behind those figure changes. A bulk of the report represents the basic financial statements, so it's all of the balance sheets and income statements, note disclosures, and budgetary comparisons, if you really want to get into the details. And the final section is another one of those extra efforts, sections that is only presented in a comprehensive report, and that's the statistical section that's found at the very end. Presents 10 years of analysis on financial results, debt information, revenue information, operating statistics, demographic and economic statistics. Very good section to go through if you are wanting to provide some historical analysis to see where the city has been and how it's gotten to where the city is at now. Just a few particular highlights. The general fund represents a vast majority of the operations of the city, so we like to talk about the unassigned fund balance. So, the money left over that is not earmarked by any third party or any internal restriction. So, unassigned fund balance, you can see over the last four years, has trended upward, and at the end of December 31st, 2020, was sitting at just about $11.3 million, which was a pretty decent increase from the prior year. We also performed what we call a single audit of federal funds. That's an additional process and report that you guys receive every year. That is due to the level of spending of federal funds that the city does. This year, the city did spend about $3.7 million in federal funds on those programs. We did issue an unmodified, again, clean, opinion on compliance with those federal programs, and we did not have any findings to report. Finally, one additional document that we include in the final reporting package is a management letter. Again, more good news. We did not identify any internal control-related issues to report. We had no new recommendations or comments. There was one recommendation from 2019 that was implemented, so we reported on the fact that it has been implemented and won't be repeated. And at this point, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
I have questions. So, I'm referring to that section, Management's Discussion and Analysis. And on page 19, there's a section for long-term debt and other liabilities, and then on page 26, there's also a section on debt administration. So, could you please tell everyone, what is the, how much long-term debt and other liabilities does the city have at the end of 2020? Because the numbers in that first chart on 19, they don't exactly match up to the other numbers, and maybe you could explain that, too?
Certainly. And some of the reasoning may be the classification of near-term liabilities versus longer term, and sometimes, for example, your bond liabilities are split up into what's due in the next year and then what's due in total.
But shouldn't the total debt match on page 19 and page 26? And if you could identify for us, what is the amount of total debt the city has?
Sure. Well, I'd have to look a bit closely at the numbers to tell you what may lead to the difference between those two pages. But I will actually direct you to the note disclosures, which is going to be the most thorough place to get the information on debt obligations.
This is Alderman Geenan. I think what Alderwoman Gilbert is getting at, I think we've asked this a couple of weeks ago of the city manager, we don't really know what the exact amount of debt we have.
So, for example, Tim?
Yes.
On page 26, right under debt administration, it says, the first sentence says, "At year end, the city had total outstanding debt of $345,304,14, as compared to the previous year, when it had total outstanding debt of $305,247,648," which was an increase of 13.1% over the previous year. So, is that $345 million, is that the true figure of our total debt?
I would term it as the total figure of long-term liabilities.
Long-term liabilities. And could you explain the difference between debt and liabilities for the public?
Certainly. All debt are liabilities, but not all liabilities are debt.
Right.
So, a couple of key items that contribute a fairly large portion of that number, that tend to fluctuate year over year. The net pension liabilities, and you have three of them, it's IMRF, police and fire.
Right.
And then the OPEB liability for the post-retirement healthcare. All of those figures for 2020 produce about, and this is kind of back-of-the-envelope math here, about $170, $180 million of that long-term liability figure.
$187 million?
About $170 or $180 million.
$180, okay.
Approximately. It would be the second line through the fifth line.
Right. $180 million of liabilities.
So, the other items, the compensated absences, which is the first line on page 26, that is, the figure represents accumulated time off for employees that would be paid out if everyone left.
Right.
On December 31st.
Right. Yep.
So, again, it's a liability that does not represent debt. Capital lease payable, general obligation bonds, and the IEPA loans payable are what I would categorize as true debt. These are written obligations that the city is paying on, on an ongoing basis until they're paid off. So, those three lines, which would be the $146,000 of capital lease payable, the $68 million of general obligation bonds, and $72 million of IEPA loans payable, I would term those items as debt. The final piece is another item that represents a new reporting requirement. It's asset retirement obligation. It is another item that I would term a long-term liability that does not represent debt. And that figure is related to capital assets that the city owns that will cost the city money when they are retired. So, there's an estimate involved in producing that number, and that estimate will be revised every year as circumstances change. So, at $22 million, it represents another not insignificant portion of that figure that isn't a debt obligation.
So, and maybe Linda has this answer. So, for the public's benefit, where does the money come from to pay for the long-term debt and the other liabilities?
In most cases, it's through property tax levy. I'd have to look again at your note disclosures if you have alternate revenue sources, so oftentimes, and this may be the case, Linda, you could confirm maybe faster than I can.
Right. And I know that for the business-type activities, that's coming from fees that we charge and then are used to pay that debt, for example, water and sewer.
Yes.
Right. So, can you tell me, Tim, how much interest we're paying on this long-term debt on an annual basis and what our annual total debt payments are?
So, that information would be in the note disclosures, so I could point you to...
Okay. That's in note three.
Yes. Note three, and let me just find the right spot. Note three, starting on page 81, you actually get kind of a line-by-line detail on balances.
Okay.
But page 89 actually lists out, starting with 2021 and forward until all the debt is paid off, what the annual principal and interest payment requirements are. So, for example, in fiscal year 2021, general obligation bonds split between governmental and business-type activities. As far as interest alone, you're at just below $1.9 million of interest of governmental, and about $650,000 of interest for business-type activities.
Right. So, there's, but there's no totals column. I've got to calculate that out, right?
Correct.
Okay. So... Can you explain, so that, going back to page 26, that 13.1% increase from 2019 for the total outstanding debt, so can you tell us what accounted for that increase?
The easiest way to find that is the far too right columns are the totals from 2019 and 2020.
Oh, okay.
So, if you look at the numbers that changed the most, you'll see that the, two of the net pension liabilities went up quite a bit, offset a little bit by an improvement in the IMRF net pension liability.
Okay.
The general obligation bonds represented about a $10 million increase, and then the asset retirement obligations was not reported in 2019, so that's $22.2 million of that increase.
Okay. So, one last question I have for you. So, is there a standard ratio or something for municipal debt? So, like, at what point do you realize, like, oh, the city has too much debt?
That is hard to say. You may get different answers depending on who you ask, but every municipality is unique. You have your own circumstances, you have your own financial structure, you have your own services that you provide to the public that may be different than your neighboring communities or, you know, downstate Illinois or Chicagoland communities. So, to say there's one rule, it wouldn't be accurate. I don't know if I could provide you a figure that would apply, you know, a benchmark, so to speak.
No standard ratio. So, like, you know, when you buy, buying a home, they say you shouldn't pay more than, what, 33%?
Sure.
Of your income, although a lot of people pay a lot more, you know? So, there's no standard ratio?
Not in that, not in that manner.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Thank you for your answers.
Anybody else have any questions?
This is Alderman Geenan. How long have you personally been looking at our audits?
I've been working with the city's audit for two years now.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this the last year or the second to the last year with Lauterbach and Amun?
Great question. I think we have one more year?
One more year?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. If there's no more comments or questions, we'll move on to item number 12. Thank you.
A special ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property described as 1018 11th Avenue, parcel 095-572, PIN number 1602105018, to Megali Oliveros Rojas in Onixil Cruz Royo for $1 plus closing costs, second reading.
Motion to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Poulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item number 13.
A special ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property described as 715 4th Avenue, parcel 091-804, PIN number 073-440-8003, to Reverend Dr. Jacqueline J. Cunningham Walls for $1 plus closing costs, second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Poulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item number 14.
A special ordinance authorizing a handicap parking space at 1506 33rd Street, second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Poulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 15.
Claims A through E. A, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $50,584.05 to McClintock Trucking and Excavating, Silvis, Illinois, for services provided at 3222 39th Avenue and 1418 9th Street as part of the sewer lateral repair program, Project 2564. B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $11,137.09 to McClintock Trucking and Excavating, Silvis, Illinois, for services provided at 2513 29 1/2th Street and 2008 17th Street as part of the water service repair program, 2526. C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $20,340.64 to Langman Construction Incorporated, Rock Island, Illinois, for an emergency storm sewer repair at 3501 34th Street. D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $13,872.0 to Crawford Company, Rock Island, Illinois, for an emergency water main repair at 2846th Avenue. And E, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $14,010.74 to Crawford Company, Rock Island, Illinois, for an emergency water main repair at 4407th Avenue.
Move to approve claims, items A through E.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I noticed that on the invoices for the two Crawford Company bills for their repairs, there's no date of the repair, not in the memo and not on the invoices. And their invoices are kind of just like summaries, whereas the other invoices by the other companies are much more detailed.
Can't have the Public Works Director, can't have the Public Works Director come in and answer that question?
Okay. Yeah, because, so the two Crawford Company ones, it was said that our city employees were scheduled for snow removal, so that's why they had to call in outside contractor. But, again, there's no dates. But again, there's no dates. I guess it'd be helpful in future memos too, if the dates of the repair were in the memos too.
The question is, in the two Crawford memos, there's no date on when the repair was, either in the memo itself or in the invoice.
On which memo?
Both of the Crawford memos.
Yeah, their, their invoices, I don't know, yeah. I couldn't find a, a date. Maybe I was looking in the wrong place? I don't know.
Invoice date is 4/9/21.
Invoice date is not the same thing as date of repair.
Correct. No, I do not see a date on here.
I can follow up that information and get it for you.
Sure, if you could just see that it's included in the future.
Generally, their format looks like the other ones from Langman with the, um, the standard format. I'm not sure why that is not on here. They generally submit it that way, but I will, I will follow up on that.
Yeah, so just in the future, if the memos could include the date of repairs?
I will have that taken care of.
Thank you.
I need to recuse myself due to the nature of my employment.
No further discussion, roll call please.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Six zero, motion carries.
Item 16.
ACH payments for the months of April 2021 in the amount of $795,201.60 and May 2021 in the amount of $2,051,341.39.
Move to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion?
I have a question for our Finance Director. Interim Finance Director. In the May ACH report, there's a list of bond payments. Are those principal or interest?
At this point, those would be interest only.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm it. Thank you.
Right. No further discussion, roll call please.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson? Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 17.
Claims for the weeks of June 11th through June 17th, 2021, in the amount of $415,452.83. June 18th through June 24th, 2021, in the amount of $540,503.72. And payroll for the weeks of May 3rd through May 16th, 2021, in the amount of $1,501,595.10. And May 31st through June 13th, 2021, in the amount of $1,608,430.51.
Move to allow the claims and payroll.
Second. Moving second, any discussion?
I just have a question. Randy, is it possible to get staff name and department on all of the entries? A lot of the entries, there's like, you have no idea who placed the order or what department or anything.
Uh, well, Lynda, is that possible? Should be possible.
Speaking of just the AP claims in general?
The purchase card reports?
Okay. Let me, before I say yes, I can take a look at.
Yeah, so I noticed when I was going through them, like, there were a couple entries for flash drives, but it was no name, no department. Some, some entries do have a name and a department.
Yeah, so we normally tell them to put the names on there.
Yeah.
Yep. This is Alder McGinnan. We had discussed this in my first term, and that's when we started to see the actual names and departments. So I think what Alderwoman Gilbert is getting at is, we've lost some accountability measures here.
Tim?
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis? Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 18.
Purchase card claims for the period of March 27th through April 26th, 2021, in the amount of $52,231.24 and April 27th through May 26th, 2021, in the amount of $56,471.21.
Move to approve the purchase card claims?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 19.
From the Public Works Department regarding the emergency purchase of a replacement communitar for the Southwest Treatment Plant in the amount of $35,310.40 from G E T Industries Incorporated, Caladon, Ontario, Canada.
Motion to approve the emergency purchase is recommended.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion?
I would personally like to say thank you.
Roll call please.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 20.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the 2021 pavement marking program, Project 2749, recommending the bid be awarded to Precision Pavement Markings Incorporated, Pin Creek Grove, Illinois, for the amount of $128,030.0.
Motion to award the bid is recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 21.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for single-stream curbside recycling services, recommending the bid be awarded to Republic Services, Bettendorf, Iowa.
Move to award the bid is recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion?
I just have a question for Mike. What does single-stream recycling mean? If you could explain that for the public's benefit?
It just means that you can put it all together in one container.
Various types of?
Yep, glass, plastic, cardboard.
We are including glass again this year?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 22.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the sale of city-owned property with no address, parcel 093-631, PIN number 160-120-4001, to Augustana College for $1 plus closing costs, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules. Uh, approve the sale is recommended, authorize the city manager to execute the sale agreement and pass the ordinance.
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis? Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 23.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the sale of city-owned property located at 1923 9th Street, parcel 103-536, PIN number 160-230-4006, to Ms. Ruby Perkins for $815.0 plus closing costs, first reading.
Motion to approve the sale is recommended, authorize the city manager to execute the sale agreement and consider the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 24.
Report from General Administration regarding a four-year business and economic growth partnership agreement with the Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce.
Move to approve the agreement, authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion?
I have a question. Randy, you recently sent out reports to the council from the chamber, which were summaries of all that they have accomplished. Does the city ever receive any more detailed reports, so that?
Well, I'm on the board, so which meets twice, uh, every two months. So at those, we see very detailed reports. Not all of it's, um, some of it we can't email out because there's some confidential information in there. But I do receive, so the city receives detailed reports, yes, and it's also included, a lot of it's included in the work that we would do with DARI because it comes in through the chamber first, and then it's funneled down to DARI for different projects.
So do you see reports showing like what projects ended up in Rock Island?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Do we, are we ever going to see that?
Well, the last one we saw was FedEx.
Okay.
FedEx property taxes are more than three times what we're paying the chamber.
Right. No, I'm not questioning what we're paying.
That was, uh, several years ago. I don't know when, but, for example, the, the project you read about in, across the river that's bringing a thousand jobs to the area, well, we were submitting for that. Uh, and then that came back a number of times, and the last time it came back, it was, they'd increased the acreage too large and we couldn't submit. So we're submitting all the time, but
Right.
most of the time, we don't get one in Rock Island.
Right, I know that. And I have no problem with the agreement, with the chamber.
Yep, but that's the last one is, the last big one would be FedEx. Now there's some, some small ones they worked on, like maybe some people are, were going to leave, and then we talked them into staying, basically. We can give you a report on all that, though.
Well, yeah, like in terms of which ones our department is submitting, you mean?
Well, you see there is like project summers or something like that. You don't, there are no names, but I don't even know what the projects are.
Okay.
The people on the board don't know what the projects are. Typically, nobody.
No, they actually have.
Yeah, because the site selector doesn't tell you who it is. You have to sort of infer who it is.
Right. But when they happen, then you can tell us.
Oh, yeah. Well, then, then there are a development agreement.
Okay.
So then you see it.
That's fine. Thank you.
Roll call please.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 25.
Report from General Administration regarding a proposal from Media Link Incorporated, Rock Island, Illinois, to, for the city to participate in the QC Passport Program at a cost of $27,000.0.
Motion to approve the proposal is recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Was there a second? I'm sorry, I was preoccupied, unfortunately. All right, move to second, any discussion?
Um, yes. Are, are we able to find out exactly what we're going to receive with this project?
Yeah, that was a presentation you saw two weeks ago, and, uh, and Natalie can come up and talk about it again if you like, but it was the signage similar to what they put up on the Channel Cat.
Right.
Uh, in this first thing, there'll be 10 locations in Rock Island, and you remember they have 10 tentative ones, but those aren't necessarily the final yet, and then we hope to add to it throughout the years.
That was my question. I mean, I, I seen the presentation, and, and I mean, I love the program, but I'm just looking at the list of destinations of, you know, kind of like the, the items. Is there any way that we can get more input about, for instance, I'm looking at from my history. All I'm seeing is for Black History is the Masonic Home. I'm not seeing anything else about Black History. Is there anything else we can add on there to incorporate that? That was my concern.
And, and there is, and we have actually another potential partner that has been talking to both Natalie and me, and that would be his focus, and then to hook up the sites in Rock Island with a national trail. So we hope to have that happen in the future. Right now, it's, that part's sort of unhold while he's putting some information together, but.
So for this project right now, we're kind of going with the proposal we were presented with?
Well, we may change those, and we'll have you get to see those before we actually do them.
So there will be a time where we can have some more input? Okay. Thank you.
Roll call please.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item 26.
Report from General Administration regarding a request to fund the Make-A-My-Weekend Festival with $30,000 allocated from the hotel and motel tax fund.
Move to approve the funding up to $30,000 as recommended.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion?
I have a question. So in the memo, it doesn't state any person or any entity who's getting the $30,000.
It's, uh, well, Kyle can come, Kyle's going to put it on for us, basically, so that's the, Kyle did it two years ago after the Downtown Association, and so it'll be Kyle that's going to do it.
So why wasn't that included in the memo, I guess?
Well, we're probably going to pay it out just from us, and I don't know if it'll go to Kyle yet, or else if we pay it directly.
Okay, is this something that, what's, what's our rule on the bidding process? Is it over $10,000 or?
Uh, well, it would be for each, I, but each item would be separate.
Okay.
Each item would be a separate item.
So it's $30,000 total?
There's food vendors, there's a stage, there's bands, there's.
No more than 30,000.
No more, because it may come in at 27,000. But Kyle can answer. You want Kyle to come up and answer some questions on that?
Am I, am I understanding it correctly in that?
Yeah, and he could just give us an overview. I mean, I remember when you did it two years ago, it was very successful. The families were thrilled with what you had during the day. It was family-friendly, which is what we want. But if you could give us an overview of what you're planning and?
Yeah, I mean, similar to what we did in 2019, um, at that point, we did, you know, we do the, there's five reggae bands, for you Make-A-My-Weekend for the, the concept. We'd had five or six food vendors, a few local, a few from out of town. Merch vendors that would come up from St. Louis, Chicago, Des Moines, Dubuque, whoever we can get. I've, this is late in the planning, I'll be honest.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's July next week.
Aye.
So, we did the ziplining. That was something that we knew that we added to it, to, I thought, added a, a family component. But the concept's been around for, I think this was skipping last year, I think this would be the 29th year that the event would take place. And so, um, we've reached out to get help this year from the city to do it, do the event.
Great. So, Randy, just for clarification, so like the different vendors, is the city writing checks direct to those vendors, or does it all go through Kyle?
That's to be determined yet, so.
This is Alder McGinnan. Uh, where's the downtown partnership in this? Where's Jack Cullen?
Uh, he's supportive of it.
But are, are we supposed to be planning events through this new downtown partnership, not through just us funding things on our own?
Well, we're not to that point yet. So we have some tourism dollars. If you remember, uh, the council allocated approximately $100,000 for tourism events. That was separate from the, the downtown group. Now, we hope that once that downtown group is up and going, that they would host events like this.
So are the tourist events just for downtown Rock Island?
This one is just, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Did you say the tourism money?
Yeah, because you said we had tourism money that we've allocated for events, but.
We had tourism money allocated, and so what we're using it for so far is the QC Passport and the Make-A-My-Weekend. It can go anywhere in the city, though, so the passport is all over the city.
I think we're, we are identifying a reason as to why things like this really depend on the establishment of a new downtown partnership organization historically. As many of the downtown guys here in the audience know, it was the district, it was DARI. And those organizations either don't exist anymore, or they're not doing events. And so the question is, do we want to continue doing the event? And if so, we have a fabulous private sector partner who's willing to put in the sweat equity to organize it. I don't know anything about organizing an event, but bringing me back to my original point, this is why we need to create a organization that is fully responsible for our downtown. Uh, that's self-sustainable, uh, so that we're not having the city, I mean, we, the city will be able to contribute to things that the downtown partnership organization does, but this is a really good example as to why we need to take that next step as a municipality for the downtown partnership organization. I mean, as you say, it's nearly July. I mean, I remember having conversations with you about these events a long time ago. Uh, and I think it's just testament whether, whether we're comfortable with the specific arrangements of, are we buying these things directly as a city? Is it going through some event planner? Is, is this the best way to spend this money? I think the entire thing has articulated, the city does not have the capacity to do stuff like this. And so we really need to be working with our partners in the downtown and with Jack Cullen to try to foster that new organization and new partnership so that we can have another champion for downtown. Unfortunately, this is what we have for 2021. Not to say unfortunately, anything reflecting on you, Kyle.
I don't know if that's a compliment or not.
I just meant with respect to where the city's at, right? This is what we got from the city's side of things.
And thank you for that, yeah, thanks for that clarification, Alderman Parker. I was going to vote against this motion, but I think based on your conversation, I'll be voting in favor.
Visit Quad Cities is also very supportive of this. We've met a number of times and they'll be advertising it for us, doing some outreach. So we'll get some additional exposure from previous years.
Great. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for all you do and your continued efforts and working with Rock Island. So thank you again very much for all you do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give our best.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Look forward to another successful event.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item twenty-seven.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from the YWCA of the Quad Cities to vacate a section of street right away between Fifth Avenue and an alleyway bisecting the 500 block of Seventeenth Street north of Sixth Avenue. First reading.
Motion to approve the vacation as recommended, that a utilities easement be put in the same, in the place for the same and consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item twenty-eight.
Report from the Traffic and Engineering Committee regarding a request for a handicap parking space at 4509 Ninth Avenue. First reading.
Motion to approve the request as recommended and consider suspend the rules and approve the ordinance.
Second.
Moved, moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item twenty-nine.
Report from the Traffic and Engineering Committee regarding a request for a handicap parking space at 2954 Twelfth Street. First reading.
Motion to approve the request as recommended and consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second. Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson. Seven zero, motion carries.
Item number thirty.
Report from the Finance Department regarding the comprehensive annual financial report and other audit documents for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2020.
Motion to approve the audit documents as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item number thirty-one.
Report from the Parks and Recreation Department regarding a proposal to finance up to $1,300,000 and zero cents from American Bank and Trust, Rock Island, Illinois, for construction of a new clubhouse at Highland Springs Golf Course.
Motion to approve the proposal.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item thirty-two.
Report from the Mayor's Office regarding the reappointments of Aaron Curry to the Police Pension Board, John Wright to the Liquor Control Commission, Harland King and Martin Pizzano to the Electrical Board of Appeals, and Michael Crager, Norm Moline, and David Parker Senior to the Planning Commission, as well as the appointment of Rashonda Johnson to the Planning Commission.
Move to appro, approve the reappointments and appointment, and appointment as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item thirty-three.
Report from the Mayor's Office regarding the designation of a mayor pro tem.
Motion to nominate Alderwoman Swanson as mayor pro tem for the next year.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Alderwoman Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
No.
Alderman Poulos.
Yes.
Alderman Geenan.
No.
Alderman Robinson.
No.
Three, four, motion does not carry.
Move to nominate Alderman Geenan as mayor pro tem for next year.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
This is Alderman Geenan. I had originally indicated that I was not interested in mayor pro tem based on duties at work and at family, with the encouragement of other alderpeople. Based on my seniority and their encouragement, I have switched and will gratefully accept this role based on the outcomes of council's decision.
Roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
No.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Alderwoman Swanson.
No.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Alderman Poulos.
No.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Alderman Robinson.
Aye.
Four, three, motion carries.
Item thirty-four.
Report from the City Clerk's Office regarding a request from Greater Antioch Baptist Church, 929 Fourteenth Street, for sound amplification and to close off Tenth Avenue between Fourteenth Street and Fourteen and a Half Street on Sunday, July 11th and Sunday, July 25th, 2021, from nine o'clock AM to one o'clock PM for outdoor church services on those days.
Move to approve the street closing and sound application request as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item thirty-five.
Report from the City Clerk's Office regarding a request from Circa 21 Dinner Playhouse, 1828 Third Avenue, for sound amplification and to close off half of the block between Eighteenth and Nineteenth Streets at Third Avenue on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, from three o'clock PM to nine o'clock PM for an outdoor show with a rain date of Tuesday, August 17th, 2021.
Move to approve the applications for street closing and sound amplification requests as recommended.
Second.
Anybody got any questions? Mr. Brent Hitchcock, the owner, is here to answer any, promote it. It was a great success last time when it was COVID associated. I guess they planted the idea and it worked, and so let's do it again, right? So, um, great success. He's only taking half the block, just so people understand all this, so, yeah. All right, roll call.
Alderman Hurt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
All right, item thirty-six, other business.
I have an announcement, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I would just like to announce that tomorrow night, June 29th, at 6:30, I'm having a third ward meeting for people to meet and greet me as the new alderwoman, to also meet representatives of my third ward Citizen Advisory Council and to give them updates on a number of, um, hot issues in the city and hear from the residents themselves on what their thoughts and concerns are. So anyone, it's at the Police Department Community Room, 1212 Fifth Avenue. If you cannot attend, there's also a Google Meet virtual meeting. You can attend and watch the meeting as well. The link for that is on the city's homepage on the website under the announcements. Look for the third ward meeting and it has all the information. And bring a neighbor.
Good. Anything else?
I have something to bring, uh,
Yes.
while walking through the ward here recently, I've come across a couple of issues with relation to the, we have a couple of areas that have these dogs that are being bred at, at residence. We don't have a, an ordinance that, or we, our ordinance permits persons, private people, to, to breed dogs. But when you have nine or 13 dogs at one residence, one, one needs to consider whether or not they're being bred for being shown or, or for commercial purposes. And if they're found for commercial purposes, of course, I would hope that the city would take action, appropriate action, so that we don't have that issue. And then the second thing I would, well, I'll, I'll let Mr. Tweet.
Well, so, commercial breeding is not allowed in residential districts, only in, I think, B2 and B3, if I remember off the top of my head, but. So in a residential area, they could, someone could breed dogs for pleasure or show, but not for sale. So we investigate, and we've just received a complaint and we'll investigate that to see what's going on.
Do we have a limit on the number of dogs?
We do not have a limit on the number of animals.
Okay.
I know that in some of our neighboring cities, they do have a limit of number of dogs that, that you can have in, in the, you know, on your property. And whether that's good or bad, I'm not going to debate at this time, but, but when you have a breeding situation, and especially when we have our constituents calling us saying, can you help me? I think it's, it is incumbent upon us to at least look at it. And as I understand it, and I thank you, Randy, for, for getting the animal control or police department involved so that we can determine whether or not this is a commercial operation and take appropriate action. The other thing I would like to bring up is that we'd like council to maybe direct our, our attorney to draft an ordinance with regard to the, uh, businesses that have the BYOB. We've had a couple of incidents where, um, the BYOB had been in place. And, uh, they have resulted in, unfortunately, violent behavior. So I think that that's something that we need to, um, individually look at and, and come up with some ideas and collectively direct our attorney to draft an ordinance that can appropriately address these, whether it is take away the ability for, for businesses to solely have a BYOB without, I know, I know we have some that have restaurants attached to them and I have no problem with that. But if you're doing it solely for the purposes of avoiding paying a liquor license or avoid obtaining a liquor license, um, I think that that presents a problem. And I think that we need to take, as council, we need to take action to at least try to get a handle on, on the, the number of, of areas that are participating in that activity.
And, uh, excuse me, our office would be happy to pull some samples from the state, from other municipalities for you to take a look at. I don't know if you want to give us your recommendations first or if you want us to take a look at what's out there and, yeah.
Can we do it simultaneously? Can you look and see what's out there and then we can look and-
Certainly.
And, uh, look at them over and, and, uh, you know, see if there's something that, that, I don't want to reinvent the wheel if it's already, if it's already out there rolling.
Sure. We'd be happy to.
Have we had the opportunity to meet with owners of those establishments and try to figure out what's going on? I know one in particular you're probably referring to.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And, and I don't know if that was, I know that, that there was one person that was involved with the operation that was injured. And certainly, and I don't care who it is, a, a person getting injured is not acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, that, that person has been talked to, was talked to before this last incident. Been talked to several times by several different authorities. Our police department, the State Liquor Commissioner, I don't know if Commissioner Liquor, State Liquor Authority has communicated with her, with him. It's, it's a she talking to him. And they, so there, there have been numbers of conversations with him at this point before this last incident, this last weekend. So, and there's only one other that I'm aware of at this point that doesn't have a restaurant or anything else to it. And they've been talked to several times already, just to reiterate some safety issues and, and understanding. But, and then talk to Linda, she's been doing some research too and checking some. But I think we also need to incorporate the police department and some of their suggestions and thoughts. Because I know they brought some to me, um, on things that would be helpful for them, uh, to have some authority and teeth into it. But, um,
I just don't think that-
You don't have a liquor license to take away, so you can't shut them down that way. And you don't have a legal right to enter the building as a private business and everything else. And so you lose some of that. So that's where the ordinance has to be drafted of such, not, like I say, recreate the wheel. There are some out there, but that's what poses some of the problems. You can't just walk up and say, we want to come in.
Well, and I would hope-
The inspectors can't even go in unless there's a, some type of reasonable understanding of, uh, violations that way.
I would hope that, that if it was a business, a restaurant per se, or a theater or something in that regard, that was bringing some entertainment value to the city, um, that, you know, we would take that into consideration. However, if your sole business is to charge a fee at the door and, and charge per cup and then charge an exorbitant fee for any mixture that you wanted to have, um, it's just, it's not a, if you'll pardon the pun, it's not a good mix.
Exactly. So we do need to, to work on that and have some, some meat to it, so to speak, to take some action if there is inappropriate things happening there. So that's what we need to, to work on. So I totally agree. And we should work on it fairly expeditionally.
Thursday, I will be holding a town hall meeting for first ward and hopefully, um, second ward will be included in, in that also. Uh, we'll be at the Martin Luther King Center, 639th Street on Thursday, 6:00 PM. So we'll be doing it, of course, live in person, but we'll have accessibility to Facebook Live. So I'll be streaming from my alderman page. Again, I'm just using this to try to get, um, an idea of best way of communicate with my constituents and continue to get the word out, so.
Okay. Anything else for, yes?
I just have a couple of questions for Randy. So Randy, um, when will the proposed water and sewer rate increases come to council? We, we haven't had any discussion on it since the May 21st study session.
We have. And so I sent, I sent everyone out what it would look like if we-
Right.
Bought down some of that. And I haven't heard any comments. So we'll be ready to bring that back in, in July then as, just as written, which was 4.5 and 5.5%.
Okay.
Per year.
And where are we at on the RFQ process? I know you've completed a second draft.
Yep. It'll go out, it just, I had someone proofread it, so it's ready to go just before I came up to the council tonight. So as soon as I get back, I shall send it here as soon as we're done.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Randy, talking about the water rates, I emailed you a question about 11th Street, right? You responded saying that replacing that water line is already included in this budget?
Yeah, that's one of the CIP items.
So does that mean that that's going to be done this year?
Uh, next year, I think. Next year? Yeah, that's in the CIP.
A $10 million project that we just submitted, the rise?
No, no, this is just the water main. Just the water main with 1.8 million.
Just replace, how are you going to replace the water main without the road on top? Or just patch it?
Well, yeah, it only runs down, down the middle.
Okay. Well, then, we can talk-
We've got a number of other grants that we've applied for.
Well, then, my question was, what would it look?